R W P C A and regular town council meeting of North Branford, Connecticut to order at 6:30 PM. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Deputy Mayor McMillan.
President.
Councilor Abelson.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Gold.
Here.
Councilor Miller.
Here.
Councilor Palladino.
Here.
Councilor Felicia.
Here.
On to item two, minutes of previous meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the November 19th, 2024 W P C A and Town Council meeting minutes?
So.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilor Diamond, second by Deputy Mayor McMillan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. Okay. Onto W P C A. First item, correspondence, citizen statements regarding W P C A. None. There's no unfinished business, no new business. Citizen statements and petitions for W P C A. None. Okay. Moving on to the regular town council meeting, community events and presentations. Seeing none. Moving on to reports of committees, boards and commissions. First is Economic Development Commission.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't get my notes together. Sorry.
Oh, okay. No problem. Okay. Park and Recreation. Park and Recreation met last week. And the director, Jesse, went over the October and November kind of month in review. Their after-school program is going well this year. They have partnered with the Y M C A. And actually, the Y M C A is actually running the program at Park and Rec, at the Park and Rec facility. And so they have that. Their monthly meals are doing well. Their rec programs continue to be steady. They've had a lot going on the last couple of months between the Halloween parties. They've also started to do more sensory-friendly activities. They have partnered with Beyond Horizons, and that has been very well received in town. Also, they did the trunk-or-treat. They had the veterans luncheon in November. They had the Thanksgiving luncheon. The senior Christmas luncheon will be Thursday of this week. That is sponsored by the Potato and Corn Festival Committee, and also Rotary is sponsoring that. So a lot has been going on at Park and Rec. Next is Police Commission.
Well, I have to say that both the regular meeting and special meeting of the month were canceled.
Okay. You had a good month there then. Fire Commission.
All right. Fire Commission met Company One on December 5th, went through all the regular early parts of the meeting. They did get a note from North Haven thanking them for their assistance with the brush fire on the 26th of October. So we also thank them for the late on that. Report from the chief. Initially, you had indicated that we were going to look to donate Tower One to North Carolina, and they no longer want that. So it's been put on a site called The Garage. Am I correct in that? The Garage?
Yep.
And it was initially put in for $5,000, but it's received several bids, and it's up to $12,000. The sale ends in about a week and a half.
Actually, it closed, and we got in the pen fifteen.
Okay. So that's good. Different from here for 15K.
Of course.
North Carolina did want it. All right.
No, no one had any requests for any tower trucks amongst the communities that were devastated. So they said find another means to, you know.
Okay. Would you be willing to give a little report on if the big man in red is going to be coming around any further from what has already been done with Company One?
I believe Company One did it this past Saturday, and Two and Three will be doing it, I believe, on Christmas Eve. Company Two does it more towards night.
Sure.
I believe Company Three does it more towards the afternoon.
And will they do the same with?
They'll post it on their Facebook pages with their location, their routes and everything else.
That's fantastic. Okay. Just make everyone know, because I know some people in One, there were some things that came to us that happened this past weekend, and they were a little confused this weekend. Some of the other companies were doing it. So that is indeed happening. And that's pretty much what we went through there. I went through some pension corrections and things of such and such. Next meeting is on the 6th of January.
Planning and Zoning Commission? You walked your way down there, Mr. Champion.
Planning and zoning had a public hearing on the zoning change or the request for zoning change on, for the duty property and total interiors, the next-door neighbor. Public hearing, and they attempted to take some action. There was a motion made, never seconded, so nothing took place. Other than that, it was business as usual.
Okay. Finance Subcommittee. Our meeting was canceled for this month. There was nothing on the agenda. Anything that needs to be handled is on our agenda for tonight.
Yes.
Public Safety Communications Subcommittee.
Inland Wetlands. Okay. Inland Wetlands met on November 20th. The main item on the agenda was the high school athletic storage facility. The commission needed more information, so it will be on the agenda tomorrow night at their commission meeting.
Okay. Blueprint Committee.
We didn't have a meeting in December. The, what we did do in November was we got an update on the Town Center Committee, and they were going to present something here to us tonight, but they, we need to table it because they had no members to show up, so.
Oh. Okay. Okay. So item I A, we will just table to next month. That's fine. Onto Town Managers Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As was mentioned, we had our Thanksgiving Day Lunch at the Senior Center. Our annual Thanksgiving Day Luncheon was put on by the North Branford Park and Rec and Senior Center staff at S T W Community Center on Thursday, the 21st. I was pleased to join Mayor Angeloni, Councilor Abelson, Public Works Director Frank Marola, Deputy Public Works Director Dan Salantano, and many Public Works personnel who also served our seniors at this great annual event, thanks to our Parks and Recreation and Senior Center staff that made this event possible. Jess Catano, Carrie Heans, Jess Cave, Kathy Poston, Sarah Brown, and Chef Tony Delizio, who once again shined with a lunch of turkey stuffing and all the trappings. This year, our annual tree lighting ceremony was held Friday, December 6th, at Auger Park, 290 Forest Road, Northford. The event featured holiday festivities, including ice carving, marshmallow toasting, hayrides, cookies and cocoa, and of course, Santa. Limited edition, collectible holiday tree ornaments are made available for $5 each at the tree lighting ceremony, and some remain available. They can be picked up at S T W in the Parks and Recreation office, and again, the price is $5. We added a fireworks display at the end of the tree lighting ceremony, which was made possible through generous donations of sponsors. The fireworks went forward as we were outside of the burn ban and risk of the previous bout of dry weather. The fireworks display added a touch that was unique to the ceremony and appeared to be enjoyed by all who attended. We had a sensory-friendly Santa event, which was held Saturday, December 14th, by our Parks and Recreation team in partnership with Beyond the Horizon for individuals on our special needs community. This past week, we held our third annual Town Employee Holiday Party at Capone's Pizza Bar and Grill on Route 80. This year, we had over 44 employees join in what was a high watermark to date. Fun time was had by all, and special thanks to Mayor Angeloni and Deputy Mayor McMillan for joining us for the evening. After two Mondays in a row with inclement weather, our flashlight candy hunt, candy cane hunt at Northford Park will be taking place Monday, December 23rd for $5 with a $2 sibling discount. Participants use flashlights to find candy in three separate categories, ages 2 to 4, 5 to 7, and 8-plus. During each run, there will be an opportunity to find a golden candy cane, which can be redeemed for a special gift. Participants should bring flashlights and bags to collect candy canes. The event runs from 4:30 to 5:30 PM and is followed by a massive fireworks show. Just kidding. Our annual holiday light decorating contest, Light Up North Branford, is underway. The deadline to submit your home or in the contest is passed, and the map of participating homes can be found on the Park and Rec website, nbr recreation.com, and Facebook page, and on my Facebook page and X account. Don't miss out on viewing some of the amazing holiday displays our neighbors have put out this season. Prizes are being awarded for best overall display, brightest display, most original display, and classic display. Winners are determined by a panel of judges. Sounds like some Star Chamber stuff to me, but. Annual Holiday Lunch at Stanley T. Williams Community Center will take place this Thursday, December 19th at noon. As mentioned, it's sponsored by Poco and Rotary. And there's the Noon Year's Eve Lunch, Thursday, January 2nd, 12 o'clock, noon at S T W. As you know, we've received our first shipment of 3x5 outdoor town flags, and we are making them available to the public. Residents can purchase these flags for $40 apiece in check, cash, or check in the purchasing office. There's an online purchase form now on the town website to place an order with pickup in the purchasing office. So far, we've sold 15 flags to residents and businesses, and I expect we'll get some more sold in spring when the better flag-waving weather arrives. As you know, we're undergoing our state-manded revaluation process, and we're at the phase where letters of new valuation letters have now gone out to residents. As we expected, all home prices have jumped since our last revaluation in 2020. Our median increase in North Branford is 36%, which is consistent with other communities statewide, including neighboring North Haven and Longford. An increase in value does not translate into a tax increase. When the council sets the mill rate in the next budget cycle, the mill rate will be adjusted accordingly. The revaluation notice has contact information to set up a meeting with an appraiser from the revaluation company, and we currently have 180 residents who have availed themselves of the informal hearing process with MuniVal. Homeowners should know that there are further appeals available on assessment they might disagree with, beginning with the Board of Assessment Appeals in March of 2025. Again, there's a frequently asked questions section about revaluation on the front page of our website to answer questions residents may have, and we've provided information to local media outlets such as the Totaka Times and The Sound, as well as included in my monthly news email newsletter and posted on Facebook and X pages. Our assessor's office is also available to handle any inquiries, and our assessor, Dave Ambrose, is here tonight to answer any further questions anybody might have before we go forward.
Good evening. Mike mentioned there's 180 calls for hearings, informal hearings. I could safely say that 90, 95% of those calls were tax concerns. So out of the 180 people, I expect around 10% to proceed to the Board of Appeals, which I think is a pretty prevalent number. I was expecting upward toward 500 calls for informal hearings. Any questions?
Great. Thanks, Dave. Appreciate it. The Public Works Department has restocked its sand-and-salt-mix shed, and town residents are welcome to fill up for residential driveway use during winter weather. You can come to 290 Forest Road, Northford, 24/7. This is open to residents only, no contractors, and limit is two 5-gallon pails. I want to extend a special thanks to the thoughtful students and professionals at the North Branford School-to-Work Transition Program, who presented us with a beautiful holiday wreath the day after Thanksgiving here at Town Hall. It was a great way to start the holiday season. No one wants to think about dead discarded Christmas trees quite yet. However, our townwide collection of discarded Christmas trees will take place on your regularly scheduled trash collection day between January 6th and 17th, 2025. Please discard only real trees. Lights and ornaments should be removed before placing them curbside.
What if they identify as real trees?
They grew organically. Just a reminder that I put out a monthly email newsletter that goes out on the fourth Friday of every month, and in consideration of the holidays, the next one goes out this Friday, December 20th. The newsletter contains news and announcements from the town and is a great way to keep up with what we have happening in town. There's a sign-up form on the front page of, and on my page on the town website to receive the newsletter. And also, as a reminder, we have a town emergency notifications available through Civic Ready that residents can sign up for. You can text NORTHBRANFORD, no spaces, to 38276 to get emergency alerts and community notifications. You can also sign up online at northbranfordct.gov backspace alerts, or call 475-655-0400 to sign up via phone. Notifications go out via text, email, and phone call. I did want to note that, in report, that at our last counselor, council meeting, Councilor Abelson inquired about potential federal funding for the extension of sewers on Route 80. And first in speaking with Representative Candelaora, one of the potential sources he's looking at to get at the state level is from federally provided lump-sum dollars that go into the state's Clean Water Fund. However, I did have conversations with both Rosa Delora's office and Senator Richard Blumenthal's office, and asked about the possibility of congressionally-directed spending as a possible source. C D S needs to line up with federal programming through which the federal funding is designated, so it doesn't appear to apply to that project. I think it's important to note that over the decades, even going back to my first stint on the council, we've looked for federal funding for the sewer expansion, and there hasn't been any to be found. And in my discussions with Representative Candelaora, he does not believe there is any to be obtained either, but that doesn't mean I'll stop looking. Councilor Palladino also raised the point at our last meeting if there might be FEMA funding available for the Edward Smith HVAC project, considering we use it as a shelter during extreme weather protocol activations, and it's a great question. Unfortunately, I found that FEMA funds for emergency preparedness are exclusively used to fund E O Cs and not shelters, and the resiliency funding is also not for shelters either. There are federal grants available to libraries from the Institute of Museum and Library Services, but those are usually programmatic funds in smaller amounts, like maybe $10,000 to $20,000. And I doubt this will qualify, but I'll explore that.
Thank you.
In observance of the Christmas holiday, town offices will be closed at noon on Christmas Eve, Tuesday, December 24th, and close Christmas Day, Wednesday, December 25th. In recognition of the New Year holiday, town offices will be closed at noon on New Year's Eve, Tuesday, December 31st, 2024, and close New Year's Day, Wednesday, January 1st, 2025. Those with business to transact in our offices should plan accordingly. Also, Christmas and New Year's Day are both trash holidays. Refused collection on or after the holiday will be conducted one day later during the collection week. As this is our last meeting before the holidays, I want to take this opportunity to wish all of you and our residents a very Merry Christmas, Happy Conica, and a Happy New Year. That concludes my report.
I just have a question. I know that we had a water, the R W A was out fixing a water problem.
Right.
And I know there were a lot, a lot of the residents said they did not get notified, even though R W A told us that they did notify them.
Right.
So are we able, like, if they're signed up for Civic Ready, and we know that, even if it's after hours, can we send out messages?
We could hypothetically, yeah. I mean, that incident happened like on Sunday night, and so, you know, hard to say that we could, but I think we could make an effort to do that once we get notification.
And has R W A gotten back to you?
They have not. So I, as you know, asked, a number of residents pointed out to me that they had, in fact, not been contacted by R W A, although R W A represented to me that they had. I did inquire by email and have inquired by phone when I didn't hear back. So far, they haven't answered me, but I kind of wanted to run down exactly how it is they make their notifications and verify that they have made the receipt. So I'm still pursuing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Town Manager Report, Permanent Project Building Committee.
For the North Branford Police Department, the building is complete with a minor punch list remaining. The Butler Building drainage issue is being reviewed, and correction is in process. The third-party HVAC consultant final report was received last night by P P B C and is currently under review. North Branford High School, the punch list update, Q A and M and Gilbane are working through the final phases, and some work has been scheduled during the holiday break, and a review of the exterior glass is planned. North Branford Intermediate School, the majority of base, the base project is complete, and currently they're on a winter pause. Sighting will commence when the weather permits. Stanley T. Williams Pavilion Project, the permits have been obtained, and the work is set to begin in the spring. That concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Citizen Statements, Petitions, and Correspondence.
Cliff Potter from Northford, for the record, because I was applying zoning and concerned citizens, said I didn't identify myself, so that part's legal. I was embarrassed by the actions of the Planning and Zoning Committee that night. I've harped on you guys, wondering who has training and who hasn't. A very prominent business in town, all they were here for was a zone change. You would have thought they were going to blow up North Branford. They were mistreated, a lot of bad comments. I won't use names because that would be improper, but the commission members, by saying nothing when it was time to vote, you can look at the film, see who they are, said so much. I don't know if they're not informed of what can happen, but this thing died on the vine, which it should not have. It was just a zoning change. More public hearings, and I see it happen next to me because they're building houses. When this foundation goes in, the town inspectors are there. If there's a, there's a public hearing like we've had. So again, I want to put you on notice that if we got people on commissions, they can do a lot of damage if they're not properly trained and if they're not properly informed. Tommy witnessed it. It hurt. It hurt this prominent businessman. This was just, it was not the way to end the zoning meeting. They could have done a couple of other actions. I don't know if they did know what they could do, but only one member, and I won't name who, they just sat there and just said nothing, and it really was embarrassing. So I think we need to tighten up our training on our commission members. I mean, the duties, they give back so much to the town, and they were treated terribly that night. The meeting did not go well. Procedures weren't followed. I was the first one to speak in favor. The chairman said, those in favor, don't you know, well, woman comes up behind me, and she's not in favor, and she was allowed to continue in talking. And I just felt the meeting never got to the point where they fully needed to follow procedures and fully treat that applicant. So again, I don't know. If I'm wrong, let me know, because I can say I'm sorry. I had to, did the chairman, because somebody input, he said. But I just feel that we've got to tighten up the experience level or the knowledge level of such big, important things. And in the end, who lost? The town did, because now they're still residential. They can't be billed as commercial taxes. I don't know if they plan to come back or not. And if they're residential, we don't, another action later on that night was affordable housing, and the town planner had to inform them, you have to vote yes on this. If I was John Duty, I'd open up that acreage and put in public housing, low income, and they could not stop that by law. So again, that's not what we want to see, but I think the problem lies with whoever sits up there, not so much the chairman, he really tried to make it work, but it was a, it was a zoo. And I, I don't know. I just, I know the procedure, and I know what they're supposed to do, but do they know what they're supposed to do? They could have voted no, but they just sat there and sat there. And even the chairman polled them again, and they just sat there and sat there. So by saying no, no nothing, they've said so much, and it's embarrassing. I don't think our town zoning commission should run like that. So I hope somebody will look into this, improve what goes on, and, and again, the duties were dealt a raw deal. That's my personal opinion, but that, they were dealt a raw deal that night. And whoever asked about how to identify a tree, I remember when I first became Agriculture Chairman, a wise gentleman said to me, well, you can always tell a tree by its bark, bark. Look at the dogwood tree. End of the jokes.
Madam Mayor, if I could just, to the point that was raised about the training, I just did want to point out that all of our land use board members are required to undergo state training, and as far as planning and zoning goes, all of the members have taken that training, save one, the new member. Also, the town attorney and I have provided two rounds of training for all boards and commission members for both procedure, Robert's Rules of Order, and F O I compliance. And many of the, I can't say exactly how many, but I know at least three, it might be four, of the Planning and Zoning Commission members did attend those.
Okay.
And they, they have some training they mentioned coming up, I believe, this, this spring or summer, summer.
Right.
That they're all required to go through.
They're all, yeah, it's all continuing.
Yeah.
Requirements, right.
Continuing ed.
Yep. Yes.
Okay. Any other citizens?
Chrissiane Vogt, 240 Forest Road, Northford, Connecticut. I'm very disappointed that, once again, we're not going to hear from the Town Center Subcommittee. This is an email I wrote to members of the Blueprint Commission and to yourself, Mayor Angeloni. Would it be appropriate for me to read it now?
Sure.
I found the last Blueprint Committee meeting of 11:21 concerning the Town Center project vague. I hope you can clarify some points. On page three of the September 26 minutes, Member Heon says that the Town Center Subcommittee would create a concept and then recommend it to the Blueprint Committee so it could be approved and brought to the Town Council. I would have liked to have heard about this concept before the bidding process begins. When Member Samansky asked in the November 21st meeting if the Town Center Subcommittee would be presenting their vision, she was answered by Member Heon, the Subcommittee has ideas of what they would like to have on the property, but they are not going to spend time coming up with all this stuff if we don't know if we can do it or where on the property it can be done. Well, what are their ideas? The Town Center Subcommittee has been meeting since June of 2024. Surely, they have narrowed down their wish list to be included in the R F P. My next question is, where exactly are the property boundaries for this vision? The Poco grounds is not a good description. No one at the meeting seemed to be able to answer this question, and numbers off the top of one's head, i.e. 50 acres, are insulting to the public. During the meeting, we were assured the project would not cross the bridge to the big hayfield, Auger Park. Number two, Wall Field and Soichuk Park would not be a part of the plan. And three, don't worry about Public Works and the fire building, they stay no matter what. I would have liked to have seen those statements in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if I should give these now, but Al Rose is sick. He was supposed to present the stuff for the police station. Wanted me to hand out the pamphlets, or you guys had them?
This is a report from P D. Thank you. I only had an hour to make them, so I did the best I can.
You did a awesome job, Victor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second to the last page says it all.
All right. Thank you, Victor. Any other citizen statements? Okay. Okay. So we have a public hearing at 7:00. Would someone like to read the notice? It's on page 18 of our packet, the post you had.
Can you read it? Here you go.
Notice of Public Hearing. The North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 17th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the North Branford Town Hall Council Chambers. The purpose of the public hearing, we have here comments on proposed ordinance number 2024-2, which amends Chapter 4 of the Code of the Town of North Branford entitled Agriculture Commission, as summarized below. Amendments include changing the membership to five electors, eliminating a member from the Town Council. Appointments will be subject to state minority representation requirements and adjusting term of office to coincide with new membership. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the office of the Town Clerk and was posted on the town website. Dated at North Branford, Connecticut, this 27th day of November 2024. Lisa Valente, M M C, North Branford Town Clerk.
Lisa Valente, MMC, North Branford Town Clerk. Publication date was December 12, 2024, in the sound.
Okay. So I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:03. Do we have any comments from the public in regards to the proposed changes to the A Commission?
Past chairman and too old to be a member, I think this is a great thing. We're a farming town. It came up during Chicken Gate that there's some advice needed. You've got to protect the farmers in town because the state really doesn't help them. As Willie found out, there is no help at state level. And Willie's Facebook says that if they don't vote, they're trying to keep the government open. If they don't vote the Farmville in, in the next few days at the highest level in the country, farmers are still going to be, I mean, we've got to get our food from someplace. I mean, they've got to realize the importance of agriculture. And we know the importance at the town level, so I'm fully in favor of this, and I hope it happens soon. And any information I got from the past, you're welcome to. Thank you.
Just a minute, Mr. Ambrose. There's, there's an item coming up on the agenda. Oh, okay.
Kara Papa. Thank you all for being here and always volunteering to be elected. I appreciate that. 65 Great Hill Road in North Branford. I just want to say thank you so much for putting the A Commission back on and listening to us, regardless if it was Chicken Gate or not. And I just wanted to ask one question with the change. I noticed that you said that you took a Town Council member off the commission. Will that make it so it's a lower commission and won't?
No, it'll still be five members.
And they'll be able to come here and update you as the other commissions? And, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other public comments in regards? The public hearing is still open in regards to the A Commission.
When we first formed the commission, Al Rose, Mike Doody were on the council. And the town planner was Carol Zeb. We felt that the knowledge both Al and both Mike brought would be very helpful to the new, you know, we're brand new. We didn't know what we were getting into. So that's why it was written up that way. I'm sure the farmers will still give you input, but I don't think you need a council member. You go to so many meetings now, I don't think you need to. So it's a good thing to just rewrite it the way it is. The information will still be attainable. But at the time, we just had two active farmers on the Town Council. So that's why there's a change, and it's a good change. So you can get good candidates.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 7:06 a.m. Later on in the agenda is when we'll take action in regards to this. Okay, so we will continue on with our meeting. Next item on the agenda is resignations and appointments. Seeing none, moving on to item 12. First item is proposed North Branford High School Athletic Storage Building. This is just staying on our agenda until we are waiting for them to come forward with their budget. I know they have been, John Florio and Scott Schoonmaker have been working with the Permanent Project Building Committee, Dave Palumbo and Victor Petiandria, and they are not ready yet with that information to come forward to us. Next item is reconstitution of the A Commission.
That's right.
So.
You're not pre-prepared?
Yeah. Yep, it's on page 26.
All right. I motion that and the North Branford Town Council hereby adopts proposed ordinance 2024-2, amending Chapter 4 of the Code, North Branford, entitled Agricultural Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Palladino. Any discussion? I have one suggestion, Mike. If we can publish something in the Totucket Times asking for members interested in serving on the A Commission.
Okay.
And just, because I, because I know there's something about three, I think three are farmers and two interested in farming, whatever the ordinance states in there, just so that we can have that information and publish it.
Sure, sort of like we did with the Blueprint.
Yes, yes.
And the Veterans Service.
Yep.
Sure. Just want to note one thing, too. Due to the holidays, it's likely that we won't be able to publish the ordinance until January 2nd. There's a 21-day period before it gets published and then it becomes enacted. So that actually is after your next council meeting. I have no idea whether you have an intention to nominate or appoint anybody to it at the next council meeting. But if you do, you could do it as long as you made it effective after the date of the ordinance taking effect.
Yeah, I mean, it'll give us time to publish in the Totucket Times and have people come forward. And if people, if we do have some names and we can start making appointments, we can always make their appointments effective, whatever that 21 days is from when it's published.
Right.
That's fine.
Very good.
Okay. So the motion is on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, on to new business discussion and action. First item is disposition of certain town-owned properties, section 824 referral. Okay. So this, this action, this started a couple of months ago when the Blueprint Committee referred some property to the Town Council for disposition. So the first part of the process as to how it goes is that we needed to send it to Planning and Zoning for an 824 referral, which they took care of at their November meeting. So that came back favorable. And now, the next part of this is for us, for the council, to decide what we want to do with these properties. And in our packet is current assessment data on here. So as the town attorney told us several months ago, is that in order, once we have the 824 referral and that comes back, any of the property, if it's over $10,000 that we're seeking on the property, we have to have a public hearing on it first. And we also had discussion at our meeting for whether all of it, if we wanted to put it out to bid, all of the parcels out to bid, or if some of the parcels, if they're small and between two people on a road, rather than put it out to bid, is to contact the homeowners to see if any of them are interested, rather than selling it to a random person and the land can't be built on anyway because it doesn't meet the specs for the area. So there's five parcels that we moved forward.
The goal here is to, from the Blueprint Committee, is to, we don't want to be landlords, landowners, you know, as a town. We want to get these back on the payroll, you know, back on the tax bill so that we're bringing these properties. So that's why these particular properties, as they were, we kind of extracted everything that was there. There was some stuff that was leftover from developments that really wasn't useful. And sometimes when the development comes in, there's some language in that, in that zoning that they have to either make a payment or give a portion of, of land back to the town. And usually, it's the most nonusable piece. So there's a lot of stuff that could be serviceable. There was a couple of pieces that were, you know, buddying up against two properties, and it would really only be something that either adjacent landowner would want. We tried to extract some of the stuff that really wasn't, it didn't make a lot of sense, to things that actually could be brought to the public and could be utilized for either building lots or businesses or something to that extent. And that's what you see here. There are a few others that will come about as we go forward, but these are the ones we see here so far.
Okay. So first one is 1599 Foxen Road, which is the old Town Hall. Personally, I think this, that one parcel is going to take a little bit more work.
100%.
And, and it's probably going to require some money for us to get appraisals and certain things done, which we don't have the money allocated. And we talked several months ago at the council meeting, is any of the other properties that are sold, we can take that money and put it into a fund, like Economic Development Fund, and use that money then for the development of 1599 or anything else that we deem satisfactory. So tonight, I would like to focus on the other four properties and not 1599 at this point in time.
I agree with that. That's a piece, it's kind of a corner piece of our most economically developed area. Supposed to be our most economically developed area, so it takes some, that'll take some time.
Okay. So, Dave. Can you just, so I, so I see in here, these are the new assessments for these properties?
I'm not sure. What list is that? Do we have the 20?
Yeah, it says 2024. So we have, we have the appraised, we have the assessed value and the appraised value on here. So the first one is 127 Old Post Road. Has an assessed value of $37,000. And if I read this correctly, so I'm on page 32 of our packet. So it looks like this is an R40 zone, .4 acres on here. Now, I see on here, it says, all buildings raised, non-conforming previously, contamination. So has contamination been?
Mediated?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
We know form of contamination?
I can find out really quickly.
Well, because I, I think part of, like, if we're going to put it up for bid, if we're, if we're going to do RFPs that people, if anyone interested has to bid on it, I think we need to establish if we're going to put a minimum bid based on appraised value. But if there's things like this on here, contamination and whatever else, that take, you need to take that into consideration when you set a minimum bid.
Yeah, the value is based upon probably being contaminated. It's greatly discounted because of the contamination.
So it's already discounted?
The value is discounted because of the contamination.
Okay.
So if I had to guess, I would guess it hasn't been mediated at the time today. But I'll find out tomorrow.
Okay.
Is it, is it considered a building lot?
Well, it's an R40 zone, so if it's .4 acres, my guess is it's not a building lot.
No, it's not.
Correct?
Right, it's not being valued as a building lot. Even before contamination.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So this, so the assessed value right now is at $37,000.
Somebody in a butter would be interested though.
Yeah, that's thought process.
Right. But my guess is, is we would want more than, we would want more than $10,000 even for, if it's in a butter, if it's assessed at 37, appraised value is.
So does that mean if it's over $10,000, if we put a minimum bid of $10,000, it has to go out to bid?
No, it means we have to have a public hearing. And any, any property over 10,000 that we want more than $10,000, we have to.
It just has to go to a public hearing?
We have to have a public hearing first before we do, before we put it out to bid.
Okay. If I may, on all of these properties, I took a look at the field cards while you've been discussing these. They all have appraised values per the assessor of significantly more than $10,000. So 7163 E of the statutes requires you to both post a sign on the property as well as have a public hearing, since the fair market value is $10,000 or more in this case. And you can do your sale any number of ways. You can have a public auction, you can conduct it yourself, you can have bids just come in the town, you could put it out with a Realtor, retain a Realtor to market and sell it to the highest bidder.
So the question is, can we go to the person who abuts the property and ask him to purchase the property?
Yes.
Without going out, even though we're having a public hearing?
Right, public hearing.
We still need to have a public hearing.
As long as we have a public hearing.
Yeah. So, so as we discussed earlier in September, we were going to kind of keep these five parcels all together. So we sent all five for the 824 referral. So if we need to have a public hearing, we would just have a public hearing on all five so that we keep the process in the same, you know, everyone's lined up. We don't necessarily have to act on all of them at once, but at least we've gone through the process together on all of those properties.
Now, if the, all of them are over $10,000 and they're all going to a public hearing and it goes to the highest bidder, basically.
Well, it wouldn't go at the, at the public hearing, it wouldn't go to the highest bidder.
Now, the public hearing is not like an auction kind of public hearing. It's some members of the public can come and say, yeah, you should sell these, or no, you should never sell this. My neighborhood likes this. We fish there or whatever, you know.
Basically, they can speak out against selling it. When it does come up, it's going to the highest bidder. So it doesn't necessarily, we don't really have to offer it to the abutters first because it's going to the highest bidder.
It's whatever we decide we want to do with it. And each property can be separate. Like, you know, because there's something on Nida Drive. So that might, we might decide that we want to check with the neighbors first to see once if anyone's interested. If they're not, we can always go out to bid afterwards if they're not interested.
Mostly, the neighbors, the neighbor's going to have to bid for it, though, right?
Well, we can, we can tell them what the minimum bid is. But this is, this is what we've set as the minimum bid for it. If they're interested.
So we can, we can give them the first right of refusal?
Right, yes.
Yeah, however you want to.
So there's three properties here that are but.
Yep.
Those are the people that we're going to go to and say, this is what we want. If you don't, it's going to go up for bid.
Dave, I have a question.
Sure.
If it's not considered a building lot, would somebody be allowed to put a camper or RV on it?
That's a zoning question. That's more of a zoning.
Because we want to be careful with that, too. If somebody sees this, we don't want to ruin a neighborhood and piss off neighbors either. You know, so I think we want to make sure we do this the right way and, and avoid anything like that happening.
So I, I get, so, so that was, that was Old Post Road. Let me see, I had a question on, that's 127 Old Post Road. Then there's 53 Nida Drive, Nida Drive? Okay, so are there two parcels on this one? It looks like .92 acres and 2.11?
It's a one, it's a one-acre zone. So the, the primary building lot is one acre. So that one acre is, is priced per building lot. The excess acreage, anything over .92, is excess acreage and is priced at a reduced rate.
Okay. And the one that's, it says here on the card, .92 acres?
That's an acre, but that, that's a building acre.
But over and under notes, it says wet. So is this wetlands? But over and under notes, it says wet, so is this wetlands?
There's a string running through. There's no discount, there's, I don't, yeah, there's a condition factor of 50%, so that must be some kind of wetland.
So is it really a building lot?
No.
Yeah.
Rose, if I could say, I, you know, these are value based upon mass appraisal methodologies. I'd like to individually appraise each one of these separately. If that's something you want me to do, I think that's the best route.
Yeah, I think, I, I think we need to understand that before we...
Yeah, I think that's the best way to go. And also, I did a comprehensive appraisal for the council back in 17 for 1599. I did a commercial appraisal for the property.
Okay.
You already did that?
Yeah, I did it eight years ago. By request of the council. Actually, it was Al Rose.
Yeah, so...
Did you upgrade that?
Absolutely. I, I could update it.
Okay.
Let me go to the table.
So is it the pleasure of the council to wait for Dave Ambrose to come back with this and then we can decide what we want? If we want to go to a public hearing or to see what's...
Yeah, I, I think that's the way to go. These are based upon mass appraisal values and if I appraise each one individually, I think you better sense the value based upon actual land sales.
Okay. That would be great.
And Madam Mayor, it also suggests that you ask your zoning staff to weigh in on these as well. They can tell you, is it buildable? What variances would be needed should someone want to build, are there setbacks, coverage, all that kind of things? What can be used? That's a great question. Could someone store their boat there or their, you know, equipment there on the property? So you have a full understanding as what can be done if someone purchases and sells.
Okay. So we're gonna drive a motion to table this and put it under unfinished business so we can just come back to this next month.
I'm going to table...
You're welcome.
All right, thanks, Dave.
12B.
13A.
13A. Distribution of town owned properties, section 8-24 referral, table to unfinished business.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made to table by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Palladino. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. And Mike, you'll work with Dave Perkins on that to get more information and then Dave Ambrose. Thank you so much, Dave.
You're welcome.
Next item is license agreement modification for North Bramford Food Pantry. Page 44 of our packet. So there, just so that we, we'll just state this. So the, the council recently entered into a license agreement with the food pantry. They have been doing extensive work in the old police department and that is where the food pantry will be moving. They will probably be ready to move shortly after the first of the year. Their current lease in their current location is until April 30th and they need to pay out their lease to April 30th. So as not to burden them with two lease payments on there, the council has asked the town manager to write something up so that we're gonna delay, instead of them starting to pay their lease on January 1st, we're gonna delay it until May 1st to help them out so they only have one lease payment.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. So I'd like to make a motion that North Bramford Town Council hereby offers its town manager Michael P. Downs to enter into a modified license agreement with the food pantry of North Bramford, Inc. For the property and building at 264th Road, changing the expense and date of their payment due from January 1st, 2025 to May 1st, 2025.
Second.
Do I need to, before we, before we do that, do we need to add it to that, that they can start in the motion, that they can still enter the property or start?
They've already said that. That was part of the original...
Well, there's a building part of it though, but that wasn't, this, this doesn't change their ability to actually function.
No, this would, this would only modify the one section.
Just wanted to make sure you didn't have to add that to this suggested motion. Okay, sorry.
The motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next item is HVAC at the Edward Smith Library. I believe we're waiting...
Yeah, Madam Mayor, we were expecting to have the report ready for you even up until this afternoon, but it is not ready for us, so we'll present that when it is ready.
Okay. Very good. Next item is NIP funds request for a plastic film large recycle bin for the DPW yard.
I'd like to bring up Dan Solentano from Public Works on this item, Madam Mayor.
Good evening. So a couple of months prior, we purchased three smaller bins for battery collection, eyeglasses and something else off the top of my head. We were trying to clean up the town buildings from like town hall entrance here at a bunch of boxes of eyeglasses and batteries and dust and junk. So following that up, there's a memo in your packet for a bin for plastic collection. Currently, we do it at the libraries and a couple of other places around town. And when somebody brings in their wet plastic in the library, it sort of doesn't smell right. And so we're looking to follow it up by purchasing this bin with NIP money.
Okay.
You have a picture of this bin?
Yeah, is, is it in the packet?
Yes, it is.
Is it?
Okay, yeah. It, it looks like...
Page 55.
Oh, okay, it's down there, okay.
Yes.
Nice bin.
It's like a four foot wide by six foot tall. This is, yeah, four foot wide, five foot tall roughly. So it's just to finish up our little recycling station we're trying to build and...
Nice bin.
Well, and it's accessible at all times.
Yeah, it says 24/7/365, so people could bring it anytime they want.
Okay.
We've been waiting to put it out on Facebook until we get this bin and finish it up.
Great.
Town website, for luck at times.
And where's it gonna be?
Public Works, right next to the recycling garage. Yep.
Okay. Okay. So do I, I don't think, is there...
There's a suggested motion here.
Yeah, you can just make one up.
I'll make a motion to allow for the NIP funds, NIP funds account to purchase the plastic film large recycle bin for DPW yard. At $32.90. Foxen Road. Or, sorry. Oh, sorry.
$22.90.
I take back my motion. I just went past it. That's right here.
Sure.
329.
Yeah. Dan, you sure this is big enough? Like, can we get the next size up for a little more money or something? You sure this is the size you need?
This is the size that will fit on the pad that's currently there, so it's the biggest we could go with. Yeah.
All right, I want to make sure we're, we're gonna find out three months from now, we should have a bigger one.
Yeah, no, it's about 12 times the size of what we're using now in the, in the lobby, so...
And, and they get emptied frequently.
Yeah, the, the hasways committee will maintain it. They're the ones who made the recommendation to, to purchase it.
The NIP funds. Okay. So a motion has been made, was there, by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Miller. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Use the funds and complete our recycling center.
Absolutely. It was on state contract too as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Next item is update on Twin Lakes Road.
Yes, Madam Mayor, for this item, I'd like to bring our Public Works Department up.
So Chris couldn't make it tonight, so unfortunately he's got stuck with me. So back in May, last, last May, we talked about the design for Twin Lakes Road. And we had $100,000 that we had already had and we needed an extra $100,000. But now the quotes are coming in at $150,000 we're gonna need. And the price is now 3.6 million for the project. That's what they're estimating right now. So we, we really gotta get this thing going first to get, we, we need, we need the money to do the job, which is a grant. And, you know, like right now, we're looking at 26 for the project to happen. So the longer we wait...
Is it all covered by a grant?
The 3.6 million, yeah.
Oh.
We gotta come up with $250,000.
Okay.
That 250,000 is for design. And then we submit the design and we get the grant, which we're, we're on the block for it. But we gotta get it done. If we keep dragging our feet, it's gonna be bye-bye.
So is there anything, is there anything in the current CIP for this 250?
Well, 150. We have to find 150, we have 100.
Oh, okay.
Remember back in May, we talked about the, we had the 100, 100,000 in, in the capital CIP. And we needed, back then, we needed 100,000, it was 200,000 when they were estimating it. But we're, and we're gonna, we're still quoting it more, but the, the beta group that's doing the project is at 150,000, 250,000. So we have to come up with another 150.
Okay. So Anthony, where would we come up with this 150?
Well, what you, what you could do is you get 301,000 annually from the state in that other capital project fund, which is kind of geared towards a town aid road mentality.
Okay.
They really want you to use that. So I guess the question to Frandy was if you started with 100,000 now, could we break it into pieces and then next to life first?
Yes, I think we, I believe we can. Chris was on the phone and unfortunately he couldn't come tonight, but I believe, yeah, we could start it. We don't have to pay them 250,000 right off the kick or they gotta get something done. But you, you have to make a commitment to us to say, we got 150.
Okay.
To finish off the project. It's gonna take about, it was a year, right? Like, it was a year of design, right?
Yeah.
It's a year of design to, for the project.
So it, the design phase would be all of '25 basically?
Just about, yeah.
And then you start the project in '26?
It'll probably go out to bid then, and it'll, it's, right now, it looks like it's slated for '26 for construction.
Okay. And can you just refresh our memory as to what has to be done to Twin Lakes Road?
Oh, it's a complete, not drainage wise, a little bit of drainage work, but it's a complete reconstruction from the old, from Quech Road all the way to 80. They're gonna, some of the areas have to be dug out a foot and replaced. So it's a, it's a major. I mean, the drainage, when we did it last time, which was, I forget what year it was, I did the project, the drainage is basically upgraded. So we don't have to do too much drainage other than underdrain.
Okay.
Frandy, if we, if we commit to this extra money, how do we lock in at that amount so that a year from now it's not 200?
Well, that's an estimate, you know, it's gotta go out to bid. So the lock-in is gonna go out when we go out to bid.
When will it go out to bids?
2025.
After they do the engineering, after they do the design work next year?
So it is an estimate. It already went up from, I think it was 1.3, 1.3 originally, and now they're talking about, no, 3.6. It was 3.2 and now it's 3.6.
I think Ron's referring to the engineering piece, all right?
What's that?
You're referring to the engineering upfront piece, aren't you? Or the backend piece?
Well, I'm looking to, to try to figure out how we can lock them into a price now or as soon as possible so that a year from now, the, the extra, well, extra 150 doesn't become an extra 250.
Well, you're not, you can't lock anything in because you gotta leave it open because you have to go out to bid.
Right, but if we go out to bid sooner than later and we sign a contract...
That's right.
Once the contract's signed, we should be good, right?
Well, you, yeah. But the sooner we go out to bid, the number stays. Like, so we're already behind, we already went up once, so if we drag our feet more, it's gonna be more.
Right. So I'm just saying we should be expeditious about this.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, we want to get, we want to hire soon.
Yeah.
Yep.
So Fran, this isn't just a retail?
No. This is a completely, completely dig out, there's, so we already did design stuff already. So the, the findings are in some areas that we have to dig down at least a foot or two feet of taking the material out and putting all the material back in. So the base is not good. So we're talking about, it's 20, 25 years, I think, since we did Twin Lakes Road the last time we reconstructed. That was all drainage widening because we had to meet it for certain standards for, for state line, federal guidelines.
So I asked about their sewers on Twin Lakes Road?
Yep.
Does that affect it? Because, I mean, I don't know how deep the pipe goes underneath, it's not gonna affect the sewers?
If the pipe is there, it's there. I mean, if we get down to it, we're gonna bury again anyway. It's deep, it's, it's pretty deep around there. We are gonna be changing the manholes, the covers and stuff because there's the big monster ones that we don't need anymore. But as far as the piping and all that is, there's, it's no effect unless we break it.
So, so...
Some minor drainage that has to be done. I mean, all the catch base and tops are gonna change, but the structure should be in very good shape. But we are adding some underdrain and whatnot in there.
We devastated the road program this year.
We certainly did.
And to take 150 out of 301 is gonna significantly impact '25, '26 as well. We have some capital project funds we're gonna probably close out and move forward. I would say in the back of our mind, we would use the state money as a guarantee that we have the additional 150 if we had to. I think we can close out some additional capital projects that are lingering and come up with 150 from that.
We just need a funding source. So if we have the money, whether it's through...
The 301 is guaranteed, we'll have that next year, every year we get that. So that's our, you know, ace in the pocket, we have that money, we can use it towards that.
But if you find...
But I think we could...
That's fine.
Other, other than, other than road, because the road...
Right, I don't want to, my first comment was to take the 150 out of the 301 from next year.
Yeah.
And we already beat the heck out of the road program this year.
It already cost my department 15,000.
Right, so I don't, I don't want to beat it up next year going into it already behind the eight wall. So if we could find money somewhere else, we'll use that money as our, if we had to use that 301 from next year, we'll use that for the 150. But I think if we could find money elsewhere, plus some capital funds.
Basically, we, you know, we really gotta jump on this.
Yeah.
And it's been, it's been years that we've been talking about Twin Lakes Road and we finally got up to the top to get this grant.
How long's the grant?
$26 million versus 200...
Yeah.
Does the grant expire at any point in time?
We need to make a motion tonight to commit for the additional, the additional cost.
Chris has been talking to him. I mean, Victor started...
And I don't think we can put a dollar amount in it because it could change... We already have 100,000.
You guys should really look into that because I know most of the grants that we deal with, if they're not used by a certain time, then...
I think we're, we're, I think we're locked in because we already got the design going.
Okay.
So most of, they, they know we're coming. If they, we're, we're on their docket as the project.
Okay.
Just the way we're...
Okay. So what do you need from us, Anthony? Do you need a motion to, how do, how you want us to work this?
I would make a motion to allow the Public Works Director and Town Engineer to engage an engineering firm for the design of Twin Lakes Road, which will avail us of the $3.6 million of money to construct Twin Lakes Road. 100,000 previously approved in prior CIPs, the balance, and again, leave it blank in case 250 becomes 275, whatever, the balance to be derived from the closeout of prior capital project funds.
Motion is stipulated by Town Finance Director.
Motion has been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Abelson. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. You're good to go.
Good. Next up, we'll start tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fran.
Thank you.
He's already, he's already, he's already dug up already. Who's he kidding?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item is 2024-25 through 2029-30 Capital Improvement Plan.
This is just the final step in the process. It was before you guys previously kicked out to planning and zoning for the 824 referral. You have in your packet the favorable review that Dave Perkins forwarded from P&amp;Z. This just adopts it, gets it finalized and more importantly allows us to pay that gentleman that did the bridge work back in June to get him compensated.
Okay.
Should be a motion there somewhere, I think.
Yeah, so I just have some questions. I'm on page 60 because that is the current 24-25 and that was the amended one after... Yeah, so I just have some questions, I, I'm on page 60, because that is the current 24-25, and that was the amended one after last month's.
Yes.
Meeting. Um, so I, I see there's three items here under ARPA. I just wanna make sure that we have purchase orders or invoices by December 30th, everyone's been contacted here?
All the department heads received an email earlier, uh, late last week, I should say, earlier this week, I forget when it was. Uh, looking for that, make sure they all had POs in place, most of them have been locked up. There's a couple of stragglers that I'm working with, we talked about earlier, uh, but 99% of them are locked up with money.
Okay, and then on here, on this report, so we, we have the, uh, Public Works renovation expansion for 1.5 under bond funds, and then a million dollars for the HVAC at Smith Library under bonding. Does that, because it's under the bonding comp, uh, column, are we locked in that we have to bond, or we can?
We are not locked into that, we, we could certainly fund it, uh, or, I don't know, we could fund the whole 2.5 million out of pocket, we could certainly fund a piece of it. Uh, we talked also earlier about, or previously about the end of the rope for the high school.
Yep.
And having Rusty kind of determine by next August what the delta is that potentially we could be on the hook from the state. We wanna try to fund that piece, we can't fund it all, in terms of.
Right.
But we, we can pick and choose some of the ones that are more manageable. I think the high school, because the state could be a multi-year delay getting that wrapped up, that might make sense to fund that out of pocket. But given the, the long to, you know, the, the building's gonna last you 20 years, so is there, um, you know, logic to bond a 20-year bond? Certainly, the HVA system, is it gonna last you 20 years? Based on our prior, uh, experience, it may or may not, I, I don't know.
And, and that's still a very movable number.
Yeah.
We don't know what that number is yet.
So again, the, the key on both of those is the target is August when we go on the market, so by June, we need to have a firm handle on what we're gonna do. Are we gonna go on the market for those?
Okay, so we have some time in regards to that. But.
Just because it's in that column doesn't mean we're gonna definitely bond it, it's just.
But, but because it's on this report, that means we're going ahead with the project, so Franny could move ahead on his project?
Once you guys make the motion, yeah, that's, it's, it's golden.
Okay. Alrighty. Um, okay, so there is a suggested motion on page 57 of our packet. Be it hereby, be it hereby resolved that the North Bramford Town Council adopts the 2024-25 to 2029-30 Capital Improvement Plan pursuant to the favorable review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor McMillan. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. All right, Franny? Two for two. I don't see you out anywhere else on this agenda. Uh, next item is financial report.
Financial report for, uh, November 2024. Again, compares favorably to the prior period, tax collection, one of the key things we look at, 54.7% this year, up from 54.2 last year. Overall revenue, 50.1, up from 46.3. On the expense side of the house, uh, the same culprits that we talked about previously, the insurance, which we talked about as a function of the liability and auto policies. Emergency management shows over expended, again, a lot of that, if you look at the expended column, it's only, uh, $6,700 against a $23,000 budget that's actually been spent, a lot of it's tied up in POs. Uh, aside from that, there's nothing else remarkable to talk about, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay. Any questions? All right, moving on to appropriation transfers.
Appropriation transfers, apologize for the lengthy list you have in front of you, we just recently figured out how to do credit card statements for the year.
Whoa.
Yeah, it's a, it was a.
Only two years coming.
Well, you know, it's.
Great.
It's a process. Uh, so a lot of the departments had minor expenditures, over expenditures, I should say, that's the first few pages. Uh, some of the big items going in to, I think it's the fourth page, some of the larger departments had over expenditures. Town Attorney, again, we had done, we had, uh, negotiations this past year, that drives up the Town Attorney budget a little bit. Technology, we historically never budgeted enough for technology, everything we do today touches technology, we bought a bunch of the desktop scanners. Again, as part of the munis process, we're digitizing everything, no more paper. Our draws and finance, that used to be jam-packed with invoices and checks, are now empty, everything's digitized. Uh, emergency management was over a little bit, we talked about that previously, that was the MBIS generator issue. Uh, veterans was not budgeted last year, we did incur some expenses there, so that's why that one, uh, was short budget-wise. Aside from that, uh, again, it's just basically a lot of year-end cleanup, I'm 99% sure this is the final one for '23, '24. Uh, and we can put that year to bed, another, uh, year in the black for the town, uh, and hopefully we can get, uh, get back on track. We've already done, I think, the first two months of this year's credit card, so once we have the routine down now and all the processes, it's gonna go a lot smoother. Everybody cooperated, and, and the patience is, is appreciated, because again, it's, it was frustrating that we couldn't get how to do it. Uh, Dennis Penone, uh, walked us through and saved everything, and, uh, each of the departments, again, has kicked in and addressed the invoices as they come to them properly, and it's, it's working a lot smoother.
Okay, um, so where are the accountants in regards to the audit?
Uh, the accountants, we had to file an extension for the December 31st, because they needed the numbers by the first December. So my hope is only a one-month period of extension, I gotta do the fixed assets still, because the other big topic that's out there, and that's all the 180 or 200 assets we bought as part of the radio project have to be added into the fixed asset program. Uh, those, that's the last lingering product that'll allow us to get the audit in place. The actuarial evaluation that we had last week, they wait for that, uh, the GAZB reports, they wait for that, uh, those are in now. The fixed assets is the last major piece we think we do it.
Okay. All right. So, do I have a motion to? The town, the town council hereby approves the following appropriation transfers as recommended by the town manager and the treasurer or finance director. Those appropriation transfers begin on page 69 through 84. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Go. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, citizen statements and petitions?
Madam Mayor, just wanted to note that in your packet, you have a, uh, piece of correspondence from Bill Savistano. I believe he hoped it would be read into the record.
Okay. So there is a statement from Bill Savistano. Um, I'll read it into the agenda, uh, into the minutes. Um, "Happy holiday season to all, once again, our Park and Rec Department in North Bramford Schools gave veterans a wonderful day of thanks for your service. I appreciate all they do, really enjoy the kids in the schools with the question and answer. Also, Park and Rec continues through the holiday season with all different events, we all appreciate their, appreciate their efforts. Reference to Public Act 24-46, tax exemption for veterans with disabilities. I'm hearing that the way the act was written, it has caused some confusion and thus has opened the door for municipalities to interpret the benefits in different ways. I do know that when I went in the assessor's office with a 60% disability, I couldn't apply for anything. Hopefully, this can be looked at and can explain any areas of confusion, looking forward to some clarity. Last year, the council updated the tax relief for seniors disabled ordinance. This coming year, as we approach the budget season, I think we need to go a step further. I think we now need to implement a freeze on both taxes and assessments for all seniors that are 75 and older and who have lived in town and paid real property taxes for 20 years or more. Again, my suggestions are negotiable, but hopefully my intentions are clear, and that is, we need to do more for those that are the most senior and have lived in town the longest. Please, let's talk." Um, revale 2024, I am going to state the obvious, at least for me, that most of us have not seen a revale like this one. I listened to other town meetings besides North Bramford and read the statement on community pride made by Town Manager Mike Downs, and they all seem to say that basically the mill rate will not rise, and in some cases, will come down. I know we have to work the budget, and this will determine the mill rate, but I think we should be given some idea of what the council is going to shoot for, so we can be prepared to accept, fight, appeal. The residents need to know the impact they are looking at sooner rather than later. I also understand how the referendum works, but even if we do have enough to say no to a budget, it would be very difficult to get the budget down if it is very far out of the way. I'm in the 50% range, and I understand the average is 36, I guess I have to appeal now. Again, as we start the budget process, it might be very helpful to give the residents some idea of what the council will be shooting for, so we know how it will affect each household. Thank you for your attention in these matters, Bill Savistano. And there was also a letter from Brent Aiken thanking, um, the, uh, that was sent to Anthony Esposito, um, as a fire chief, um, for the, uh, care and, um, compassion and professionalism of the ambulance crew, um, as he needed, um, service back in November, and as a law enforcement for 20 years with the Connecticut State Police. Um, he highly praised those that came to his aid. Uh, we hope Brent is on his way to recovery, and, um, we thank Brent for his kind words, um, to our department. Are there any other public comments?
I just have a few questions, just for clarification from things that I heard. Um, one, going back to the H24 referral, um, there, there doesn't seem to be any room for public comment until you go to public hearing? And so, from some of the things I heard with, um, the properties, I did hear that, um, you're expecting to be able to collect taxes on the properties if they're sold, however, if these properties were the highest bidder of, say, a nonprofit organization, and then you don't, you can't tax them, so they are not paying property taxes. That is definitely a possibility, so I'm just wondering if before we make this decisions and just, and settling our minds, before you hear from the owners of the property, which is all of the citizens, not just our representatives, that you give us all a chance to come in and clearly understand what your intentions are? Because from what I heard with discussion here on capital improvements, money seems to be tight. We've taken on a lot of spending on new buildings lately, and I, uh, going back to the blueprint committee in the town center, I do not think a large project like that, that isn't taking into account very important things to our citizenry, like the sports fields, how those would be affected, um, is taken into account. And my last question is, with the capital improvement plan, is that only for existing buildings? Or is that including any new or, um, wanting to be planned buildings?
In the current year, the only building that's approved is in addition to the Public Works building. There's nothing else in this, this year's CIP of a capital nature relating to buildings, that's the only one.
Okay, thank you so much.
With Potter-Northford, um, as I always tell you, I love this town. And I am also disabled with the veterans, and I, what is nice is Dave opened his office and gave me information. This is what you get under the roof of this building. You get understanding, compassion, and you get dedication. You walk around this building, and I think our town employees sometimes don't get appreciated enough. I appreciate them all, and then, and I appreciate all of you. It's just, he cared enough, he took some information, he wants more from me, and he wants to see what he can do. Now, other towns, you have to make an appointment, you stand in a long line, not this town, if you dip. I mean, maybe I abuse it so much, Anthony works with me, uh, Franny works with me, you know, but, so I have to try, I try to get back when I can. But you guys, you, you keep our town, well, there's no debt collectors banging on the front door of the town hall, so I think we're doing all right. You take your time, you all have good interest, I'm as sad to Craig, uh, Greg's on, you know, he's on days now, because he used to wash my house at night when he woke by. So I've lost some benefits, but I've gained some too, I mean, you all give you 100% of your time, away from your family. Budget time is terrible for you guys, it's spring, but it's not for you guys, and you have to make hard decisions. But you always seem to make the right decisions, we're moving forward. And again, so I think we gotta recognize our biggest asset, our employees and our council members, and some of our commission members, I'll, I'll narrow it down. And, but again, what I got for service just now is amazing. He cares, and I didn't know, I had a piece of paper, he looked at it, and he says, get back to me. And he, so we don't know, and you just touched on it, I guess, through some of the public comments. So again, thank you for another good year. I mean, it's, I don't know where they're going, they're going by so fast. Thank you for re, regenerating the ad commission, and I think you're doing it right. The farmers will give you information, the problem was when we formed it, I ended up being the chairman, a phone guy. You know why? Because I had the time. Most of those farmers, I mean, they were too busy being farmers, trying to scratch a living out, so I, with Carol Zeb, if it wasn't for Carol, we would've, Carol, we would've never got off the ground. I mean, she fought twice to get the roof on the barn. Just because we got turned down the first time, she called me and said, Cliff, we got turned down, let's try something else. And we got accepted, so again, with Dave involved and, and good people, young people, and the farmers, you know, hopefully some of them will wanna be on it, because they're gonna be your source of information. And, uh, the, the DeFranciscos and the Roses and everybody, I mean, they'll give you input. I mean, the phone guy, I, I didn't know anything, but we had Mike Duddy and Al Rose and everybody, and we, we tried to help everybody. Not everything worked, but what we did get going, and one thing I'd like to see you do every year, has, have it, ask the farmers to come talk to you in the fall, what do they want? If you're not representing them, you gotta have an open, what do you want from us, that we just ask them? And that's how we get our input, what we would need to do for next year's goals. So I don't know if you can work that in there somehow too, but I mean, I'm, you're going in the right direction, in all directions, so thank you very much. Thank you for the good year, and I'll be back to bug you next year.
Thank you.
We look forward to it.
I would just like to wish all of the residents of North Bramford, um, a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. Have a safe and healthy New Year, and we will see you in 2025. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.